Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting order. And everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands. Our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Kelly, can you please follow the roll?
Mr. Rusty? Mr. Cora?
Present.
Mrs. Torrey? Mr. Montani?
Yes.
Mrs. Sexton? Mrs. Traynor?
Present.
Miss Eave? Here, in the operating room.
Uh, present.
One, two announcements and recognitions. I would like to, uh... Announce that if there's thirteen point eight, uh, the steeplechase furlongs, we will remove from the agenda. And then regarding certain items on the agenda, um, Dr. Castagna will address them.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, first, we had some invoices listed under construction invoices that, um, we had to clarify. Those are visible. They were visible last night. We did correct those on the board agenda. The second, I just want to bring the public's attention to motion twelve point three. We do have a request from the administration to seek permission from the board, um, to authorize the administration to hire staff as necessary after tonight's meeting that we could then ratify on August twelfth. And that specific motion relates to the filling of the open positions after the bidding meeting, um, that happened because of the curtailments in February. So I am asking the board for that motion and specifically spoke to the three positions that I would be filling, uh, tomorrow. Using that language. This language is common in schools. Many schools don't have board meetings in July. The exact language came directly off of quick valeries board agenda, um, and they use that to authorize hiring so that they don't have to wait until the August meeting to fill those. In this instance, again, I'm using it to fill three positions. When you look at the HR report that we posted twenty-four hours before the meeting, uh, there are three positions we removed. Those were individuals we offered the job to who sought employment elsewhere, and I, um, have to fill those positions tomorrow. So again, this is this instance, and it will just be to fill those three other positions. Dr. Sable has a few announcements he also would like to make.
Yes, thank you. Um, first is, uh, nine point three, which is book donations. Upon a tour in the high school, one of the custodians came to me and asked of books that were going to be discarded, if they could be donated. In reviewing where the books came from, they were going to be discarded from the DMC as part of a normal, um, routine discarding process of books that are no longer used or, um, relevant to our school. So we, I approached the board and that's beyond the meeting for vote for tonight. As well as nine point six is a targeted school improvement plan. Um, this designation was given to our high school, um, by the state earlier this year for the last school year. It is for a very targeted group of students at our high school, um, involving their achievement, graduation rates, and attendance. This is a first step for approval so that we can send it to the state so that they can give us feedback. And if there is any further adjustments we need to make, I will bring that back to the school, uh, board for review and final approval so that we can send it to the state again. Thank you.
I, I would like to say thanks, Rita. Uh, she's here, um, maybe I can't see that far. I'd like to say thanks to Rita, uh, because she's the one that brought up that, um, somebody retiring, um, actually just gathered a bunch, from what I understand, of books from the DMC that, that weren't being used, and they were going to be discarded and they were on the loading dock, uh, to be thrown out. And she recognized them and, uh, she, uh, said, hey, I'd like to donate these to the Greensville Library. I, I don't know why, um, normally, um, just for everybody's, um, knowledge, anytime you get rid of anything in a school district, you need more approval for that. You just can't throw it away. Uh, so that never came to us, but, uh, I thank her for bringing that up because those books, but in some of them are in good condition. You know, they can be reused, uh, especially if the library, uh, needs books. So, uh, that's why that's on the agenda tonight. Uh, I was with Joan and we looked at, uh, those books on the loading dock with Dr. Sexton. So, thank you, uh, for bringing that to our attention.
Just one final announcement. Uh, this was a very busy few weeks for the administration of the board as we prepare to have our staffing needs in place for, uh, first teacher induction day on August fifteenth. I, I want to thank Ms. Copay and Ms. McCorney, who led our HR efforts. The interviews are one thing, right? We had seventy interviews in, I think, sixteen days. But the setup of those interviews is the difficult part. Reaching out to candidates, trying to coordinate times, trying to get schedules booked, trying to get the principals online. So there's a lot of backend work that they put into. It's a long, uh, evenings to get that done. So I just want to thank them and recognize them for the work.
Is there anything else that needs to be addressed?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, so do we have a superintendent report?
That's, that's.
That's a report. Okay, perfect. Uh, on to public comments on agenda items, Ms. Eave.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'd like to invite Penny Rudson, um, the tax payer, that would like to address any agenda item. Please keep your comments to within a minute. We do appreciate your interest. Kelly, anybody sign up? Uh, yes, we have two persons who are, Thomas Rubert.
Check, check. Thank you. Thomas Rubert, three five two, Menity Road, Scott Township. First, Kelly, I want to, um, just say that I'd like to make your life easier because I, right now, when I'm going to say you can scratch nine point three at thirteen point eight, um, to make everybody's lives easier when I can. Um, I'm going to say the following things to bring to light what should be looked at, even though tonight's agenda items are being consolidated into one motion. First off is agenda item ten point one, rule of board meeting minutes. Specifically within that document, I'd like to point out item six point three, vacancy appointment. As one of the candidates that was interviewed, um, I would like to say that due to the fan that was blowing behind me, I came to learn that I did not hear the second question correctly, which is neither here nor there. What it really does is it leads me to mention the continued practice of having these meetings in this auditorium. No doubt the hottest and warmest room in any Shartiers Valley building. Why do meetings have to continue to happen in this space? Why can't meetings be held in the assembly room as in the past? Additionally, I also want to mention that within section six point three of that document, uh, item ten point one, I want to mention that during the roll call of votes, one board member made the comment, let me check my scorecard, and chuckled before casting their vote. That board member should be absolutely ashamed of themselves for saying such a flippant comment, making a mockery of the entire process, especially to the community members that took filling the vacant board seat so seriously. I would suggest the community members go back and watch a video of the last board meeting to see who said it. Oh, no, that's right. There is no district provided broadcast stream or archive video of board meetings. Graduation was streamed, is available to watch and re-watch at any time, so it can be done. Agenda item twelve point one, human resources report. I am commenting on the resignation of the STEM consultant. This is not directed at all in the, at the individual. I have utmost respect for that individual as a former teacher here. The STEM consultant recently retired from CV, was then approved to attend a conference in Cleveland per the last meeting's agenda, which I assume cost the district money and is now resigned. What money was spent and why did the STEM consultant already resign? Finally, agenda item thirteen point five, authorization of signers to the district bank accounts. I understand why two of the three individuals need to be added to the bank accounts, but I take umbrage with the other being added. Mostly, why now, after all these years, but also for one reason. Who are the other signers on the district's bank accounts? Do all transactions require two signatures? I could go on, but just want to say hopefully there is a system of checks and balances in place to keep the district's finances secure and accountable for it.
Next is Emily Marco.
Emily Marco, forty-three, Blairview Drive, Scott Township. I have a comment number one on my eight point one consent agenda. I understand the purpose of what the consent agenda is for, and it seems like that's being abused. It's supposed to be for agenda items that are not of controversy or needing any discussion. I appreciate you at least addressing some of the agenda points, but there are still others that should be shared with the public as to what is, it actually needs and what is going on. I'm a little confused how these items get onto the agenda because you don't have workshop meetings anymore, which is where you voted, you all voted what items were going on to the agenda. You don't have those anymore, and per sunshine ad law, none of you are allowed to discuss this in a forum, so... How are you all okay with seventeen items on here and just blanking and approving them? That is not being transparent following P A's school code law. Nine point three, the book donations. Um, yeah, it's a little concerning that you're throwing library books away and you all don't know about it. If you could share what that process is exactly and specifically who decides what books are considered outdated? And what's the criteria for that? I'm sure all of you are well aware of the climate that we are living in right now where individuals feel it's appropriate to just go in and throw library books away because they don't want people to read it. So I think you should be very, very careful about how things are learned and definitely not include very, very little information when you're saying you're going to get rid of book resources for a school district. The only other point was fourteen point three that wasn't addressed, um, this policy three two five and fully dressing grooming. I saw what is currently existing and then what the proposed policy is. I'm a little confused as to what brought this on. I've never seen any employees that aren't dressed appropriately or professionally. But especially like no jeans or t-shirts. There's a way to dress that up in primary school teachers. Like kindergarten teachers can't wear jeans and t-shirts sometimes. I feel like I've been in corporate settings that have these restrictive dress codes. If you could elaborate on that and the reason behind it, that would be great. Thanks.
Okay, I'd like to address that we had an executive session, private, public meeting to discuss personnel, legal, and safety methods. On to the solicitor. Any report this evening?
I have no report this evening.
Okay, on to the informational agenda. Uh, Shazda, uh, Mrs. Sexton? Public reporter. Uh, Mr. Montani, the Pathfinder School?
Uh, yeah, we did not have a meeting in July, so I also have no report. One thing I will say though is now that I'm the main Pathfinder representative, we will need an alternate. So I guess if somebody is interested.
Anybody want it?
Call it tax.
Mr. Turner says he wants to do it.
You want to do it?
Yeah. Are you, are you fine with that?
Thank you. That's, that's all.
Hey, no problem. One thing is, is, um, Mr. Oliver was the president, maybe you could, you know, I mean, I don't know. I hate that word too.
Uh, they, I don't know. They, they have not yet reorganized, so I don't, I don't know what direction they'll want to go, but we'll see.
Okay, uh, the solicitor tells me we just have to do a roll call for the alternate. So you can just follow the roll and then we'll, we'll, um, put it in the end that, uh, that's how we'll pick.
Mr. Rusty? Mr. Cora?
Yes.
Mrs. Torrey? Mr. Montani? Mrs. Sexton? Mrs. Traynor?
Yes.
Miss Eave?
Yes.
And Dr. Mary.
Yes.
So Miss Traynor is the alternate, uh, to Pathfinder. And then on to Parkway Western Courier, Detective Center, Mr. Turor.
We canceled our July on this meeting. We canceled our July on this meeting.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda, uh, the superintendent recommends an ISO move to approve items nine point zero through fifteen point one, removing thirteen point eight. So move. Motion made by Mr. Turor. And a second, second by Miss Eave. Any discussion on these items?
I have just a very quick question, and this has not yet been discussed. It's the fall softball thing. I know Zach isn't here to answer, but can we just get, so that's the middle school softball team only, correct? And they're moving to the fall because of an official shortage? Is that, do I have that right? Okay, I'm just making sure. And that's like, is that the W P I A L?
Yeah, that would be, the, the season is going to change for the whole, uh, third year. But that's actually good, uh, because, you know, I was asking the same questions, and it would be nice if they changed it for the high school, because that way lacrosse world could then play the softball.
Yeah, so there's a lot of discussions about adding other sports to the competitive, competitive cheer. And so there, there's a lot of discussions above all of us that they will dictate. I mean, we're going to fall in line to the recommendations so our kids can participate with as many schools as possible. But yeah, that's, it is important enough.
So this, that's for equity, right? It, uh, then they're going to maybe, and this is just for grade seven.
Yeah, this is the best.
They won't flip back and forth. There's no way from here to here. You know, I've wrestled for twenty-five years. We did this with some of the middle school soccer programs too, and some of the schools we had to take because it just, we lost thirty percent of our breeze during COVID. And they need to come back real fast after that. So this will be probably fairly problematic.
I just want to thank Dr. Sable and Dr. Castagna for addressing. Just wanted to thank Dr. Sable and Dr. Castagna for addressing some of the items on the consent agenda. It's helpful to know additional information, and we appreciate that.
Yes, and I would like to say that after all the work, uh, that the administrative team did led by Dr. Castagna, he, he should be congratulated. You know, uh, we had thirty-one people retire, actually thirty-two, uh, left the district. And in doing that, he hired eighteen people this week, three of them, uh, as he explained, will most likely get hired tomorrow. And that's the reason for that omnibus motion. But more importantly, that, uh, none of the current staff were furloughed. And I know that, um, that was a tough, uh, vote back in April and May, uh, but I, uh, thanked Dr. Castagna for his work. You know, he got seven point one million dollars on the budget, made, uh, with no tax increase, made the budget work. He had hired a whole group of new educators that are coming in here to, uh, Charters Valley. So I say thank you.
Thank you, the board for supporting.
Um, I just want to say something too. Number one, I think that part of the reason of us hearing, I agree with what Mr. Rubert said, it would be much better in the D A R as far as acoustics. We can't even, I can't even hear each other. It's really bad. But also with the book donation, can we clarify that for whoever asked that? Like what happened with the books that were being donated?
Yeah, who selected the books? That's one of the big questions.
The, the D F C teacher who was told to go to the library.
Retired.
Who retired, who's the one who selected the books. Listen, I can promise you this is a problem in every school district. There's always a room somewhere with just this old materials. A lot of times textbook companies will just bring us samples because you might be piloting a science curriculum. And there's six different companies sending you five grade levels worth of books that you never even opened and used and paid for. And then you have old books that were purchased with federal Title I money that have very strict rules on what you're allowed to do with them. It's always the safest play to donate them. Because we had so many retirements, some people were just cleaning out rooms and I, you know, we started, again, you're exactly right about Rita because she pointed it out and knew it was wrong.
Yeah.
And said we had to do something about that. And it brought attention to us to make the staff more aware of that in the future to discuss it. But I'm glad she did and, you know, who better to go to than the person that was running the library?
Sorry. I think that it's just, you know, concern when there's no context of it, like that someone was just going through books and picking and choosing what would be used.
Yeah.
And that's why, so I just appreciate the clarification. Just stopping around. Thanks.
Okay, all in favor? Uh, anybody opposed? If a motion passes.
Mr. President, before we go on, um, one of the new persons in our HR is our new maintenance director. Hopefully he'll be starting in a couple of weeks. If I could bring something to his attention, I hope we can. If I could bring something to his attention, I hope we can do this. Driving around our schools, as I do three or four days a week, and if you would get in your car and drive to South Bay at, uh, Keystone, Mount Lebanon, Upper St. Clair, Arlington, you would see that their grounds are impeccable. Then I drive around our school district, and I think they're pitiful, and they've been that way for a number of years. We have to make our new maintenance director aware of this and clean up our after around here. If you drive anywhere around any of our schools, the grounds are terrible. They don't weed whack, they don't blow the leaves, they, it, it. They don't weed well. They don't blow the leaves. They, it's just horrible. So we need to have something done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The job's. Please, I will have to say that whoever cut the side of the high school with the middle school side, the hillside, did a great job.
Did a great job.
Whoever did that, they should be commended because it looked beautiful. Though one thing I would bring up.
They got to stay after that.
To whoever, and maybe this is the doctor, Dr. Sable, when I brought this up multiple times. When you're leaving the middle school, you can't see the bars on the left because the weeds or the grass are a little high. It, that could be cut on a regular basis versus, you know, just when there's a call from somebody complaining that they can't see pulling out of the middle school. It's just a safety issue. I appreciate it. So moving on to public comments on non-agenda items, Miss Eadie.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the opportunity for any taxpayer or resident to discuss any item that was not on the agenda tonight. Again, please keep your comments two or three minutes. Anybody sign up, Kelly?
No, we have no comments. None? No comments?
Okay, I'd like to announce that our next board meeting is August 12th, 2025. May I have a motion to return? So move. Motion made by Mr. Turor, second by Mr. Montani. All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.